We are recording.
Thank you, son. Thank you, clerks. I'm glad we're all back online. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is November 15th. This is the meeting of Seattle City Council, and our Seattle City Council meeting will now come to order. The time is 2:05. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Muscata.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Sawat. Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Council President Juarez.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Following our agenda, we'll move on to presentations. There are no presentations for today. After that, we'll move on to public comment. And as colleagues, as you know, we will be doing the hybrid public comment. So, Madam Clerk, I understand we have eight remote speakers?
We have eight remote, and I believe two in person. Let me grab the sheet.
Okay, so we are gonna do the remote folks first, and I understand that we have an individual who will be speaking to item number two, and the Honoring of Mr. Bill Burton. So today, everybody will have two minutes. So let's start with our remote speakers first.
Okay, give me just a minute.
All right. Madam Clerk, I'll just go ahead and let you call out the names.
I've lost the timer. Give me one second.
Take your time. We're all here.
I got it. I got it. We're good. We're good.
We're good?
Yes.
We are good.
Awesome.
Jody. I don't hear it, so.
Well played.
Somebody on, is somebody unmuted? Because we can, I can hear a conversation going on.
It's our video. It's our public comment video. We're having a hard time having it come through, so we're working on that.
Okay. Thank you. So should we just try it right there?
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast Salus peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue. That is your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You will then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when 10 seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council deserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk. Go ahead and call the names.
Our first remote speaker today will be Howard Gale.
Mr. Gale?
Good afternoon. Yeah, good afternoon. Howard Gale with SeattleStop.org. Two and a half years after George Floyd, the budget the council is now considering still proposes more money for the police and wastes over $11 million on a police accountability system that still has police investigating police. This is $11 million spent denying victims of police violence any appeals or any semblance of justice or accountability. Despite this, there are hopeful signs. Councilmembers Muscata, Morales, and Herbold met with advocates for families impacted by police violence recently, resulting in Councilmember Muscata taking a huge and important step by introducing a budget amendment to start a process for supporting families impacted by police violence and investigating an appeals process for adverse decisions made by the Office of Police Accountability. This is a small but very important step in ameliorating the harms that Seattle's police training and policy create. It is a moral and practical statement that offers a glimmer of hope that after a decade of failed promises, we can see some light and hope that impacted families will receive the aid they need to navigate an unjust system. Thank you to councilmembers Muscata, Morales, and Herbold, and I hope that all council members will offer their strong public support for Budget Amendment SPD 101A in the coming weeks. That's SPD 101A in the coming weeks. And please make sure we do not waste $1 million on failed technology for public safety such as ShotSpotter. Thank you.
The next speaker is Larry Williams. Is Larry Williams? Okay, moving on.
Okay, go ahead. Move on.
Moving on. Next speaker is Nate Miles.
Mr. Miles? Nate? Star six, sir.
Nate, I see that you pressed star six. Check your phone to make sure it's not on mute. Mr. Miles, your phone might be muted at this point. Okay, Mr. Miles? Please make sure your phone is not on mute, Mr. Miles. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next speaker, and we will circle back to Mr. Williams and Miles, and the next speaker will be Hannah Swanson.
Hannah?
Hi, my name is Hannah Swanson, and I live and work in District Four. I've grown up in Seattle, and I love Seattle. I hope to continue to live here and take over my family's business, Swanson Shoe Repair, as a fourth-generation cobbler, as long as I can afford to do so, which I think is the reality for many young workers here and vulnerable community members who want to invest in and love a city that's increasingly unaffordable and impossible to exist in. Young workers reject an austerity budget. We reject the belief that there are no easy answers or that there's no obvious way out of a budget crisis. Struggling workers cannot pay for Seattle's budget hole. We reject progressive taxes, a $10 tab fee increase, or a bike and scooter per-use tax is a cruel consideration for folks living paycheck to paycheck during an economic crisis, especially in the wake of the pandemic, young people and the most vulnerable understand who suffers most during crises. We struggle to pay rent while corporations and the wealthy profit in gross unthinkable amounts. In a city with the second-largest billionaire wealth in the country, corporations are responsible for budget holes, not us. It's time for the wealthy to invest their profits back into our city, our communities. In hopeful imagination for our city, I enthusiastically support Councilmember Swanson's People's Budget, increasing the Amazon tax by $140 million to address reduced public revenues projected for next year. I also urge, I don't know what they're called, but Councilmember Morales's three amendments to support the I-135 bill, and urge councilmembers to keep in touch with young community members invested in the city and vote yes on the proposal from the People's Budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna circle back to Mr. Larry Williams. Larry Williams? Please press star six.
I see Larry's tile up there. There you go.
All right, can you hear me now?
You sure can.
All right, great, great. First of all, thank you all, and happy Tuesday to all the council members there and everyone on the line. My name is Larry Williams. I'm a second-generation black-owned communications company owner. And, you know, I've been in Seattle since 1970, so I've been here quite a while, moving here from Georgia. And one of the first deals that I had was being recruited to the Boys and Girls Club Board, Rotary Boys and Girls Club Board, that at that time didn't have an executive director. Andy Johnson, a good friend of mine, recruited me to this board. And one of the things that we did as one of our first half-person, hired a director, an executive director. And that, we had several, I shouldn't say many qualified candidates, but the one that stood out most of all was William Bill Burton. You know, and having worked with Bill all of these years as a board advisor and King County Board member, you know, I found Bill to be one of the outstanding community assets that we had in Seattle, but especially in the Reyna Vista area where he was born and grew up. Bill became like the Pied Piper of Reyna Vista, and still is. He recruited an outstanding board for many years and retired a few years ago. But Bill's vision of a world-class facility was realized years ago when the new Smiloe Reyna Vista Boys and Girls Club was opened. Two-story, $24 million facility that Bill led the campaign for generating, and that those funds formed the community. One of the key board chairmen was then King County Executive Ron Sims. So I think this is an opportunity to provide Bill and his family with the flowers that they deserve for that Reyna Vista community. That's it that I have to say. Hope Mr. Miles can come on. He was one of the young people that we recruited to the board after Bill got started and when he was the director of not only the Reyna Vista.
Our next speaker is Nate Miles.
And, Madam Clerk, can we give them a little bit more time? Because they are speaking to the resolution that Councilmember Peterson is gonna discuss later. So they're kind of speaking to it now. So if we go ahead with Nate Miles? Is that who's next?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Miles, go ahead. Okay, I see Nate's tile up there. Mr. Miles?
His phone might be on mute. I can't say for certain, but that seems like the next troubleshooting.
Okay. Do you think that maybe if we don't get Mr. Miles in the queue here, we can somehow reach out to him when Councilmember Peterson, if I suspend the rules and allow Mr. Miles to speak to the resolution for Bill Burton?
That is an option, Council President.
Okay, can we, let's finish public comment, and let's keep Mr. Miles on our list, and let's help him out with the technological, technology issues, because I know that he does want to speak to the resolution.
I need to confirm with IT to ensure they can reach out to them. If someone from IT can confirm if they're able to do that.
I do have a phone number. I've been corresponding with him, so I will give him a call now.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. All right. So you wanna, are we through our list?
My apologies. Yes, now we're moving on to the in-person public commenters.
Okay.
Excuse us.
That's all right.
We are now moving to the in-person public comment. And if you'd like to sign up, you can still register to speak. The first person is Alex, first and only person at this point is Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Hi, my name is Alex Zimmerman. Yeah, and I'm president of Stand Up America. I try and understand, and I won't speak about agenda, about Mother Luther King, and Bill Button Way. Yes, very interesting for me, because people who speak before me, like a five or six, never speak about agenda. And I don't understand. When I start to speak something, what is very important, you always cut me and give me trespass. Terting trespass for 1,200, 100 days enough. My question right now, how Mother Luther King, I said, what is you doing? Don't show people faces when we speak, huh? What is his opinion about this? It's very interesting. I tried to find this opinion from many, in complaint to everybody, clerk, complaint department, everybody, why you don't show faces? They told me very simple answer, because it's council decision. So when nine council makes same decision and post to be individual decision, this pure conspiracy. Is this a pure crime? This is exactly what's happened here, and this go for seven months. It's very interesting for me, and I don't understand why you want a case, class action against you? I will bring this. I went to class action before against dirty government. I can't doing this again. I only don't understand who will pay for this? People who have problem with housing, who have problem with money, who right now totally controlled by Amazon? You never control city when income from $60,000 come to $120,000 only for six year. So who's boss right now? You? No. People? No. Amazon, who move right now to Belleville. Again, for election this year, you know what it means, because you're pure Nazi, you stop a psychopath. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Who else we got left, Madam Clerk?
That was the last registered public commenter.
Okay, so we'll hold the lines open so we can loop back to Mr. Nate Miles. So just remind me of that, because I know if I don't write it down, I'll forget, and we'll move on with our agenda. Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay, we've reached the end of public comment. And moving on to our agenda, to the adoption of the introduction referral calendar. If there's no objection, the IRC is adopted. Not seeing or hearing an objection, the IRC is indeed adopted. Moving on to the adoption of the agenda. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted, and again, not hearing or seeing an objection, the agenda is adopted. Moving on to adoption of the consent calendar, my understanding is that, no, council member has asked that any item be removed. On today's consent calendar, we have the minutes of November 1st, 2022, and we also have the payroll bills, Council Bill 120458 and Council Bill 120460. Okay, not hearing any, hearing anyone wanting to remove anything. I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Member Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Muscata?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson?
Hi.
Councilmember Sawat? Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Council President Juarez?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
That was just a very robust yes from Councilmember Herbold, so thank you, Herbold. Is, okay, so, let's see, I already forgot. We took the roll. Okay, consent calendar. It has been adopted. Thank you. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes and legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? Apologize for that. Okay, moving on to committee reports. We have one item, and that is my item. So Madam Clerk, will you please read item one into the record?
Agenda item one, Council Bill 120455 relating to Seattle Department of Transportation improving a change to the approval alignment for the Central Pigeon Sound Regional Transit Authority's Link Light Rail Transit Project.
Thank you. I move to pass Council Bill 120455. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass this bill. As a sponsor, I will address this item first and then open the floor to comments. Council Bill 120455, before you today, authorizes the Director of SDOT to amend the transitway agreement to include the addition of an infill station at Northeast 130th Street located within the city right of Way. It is largely ministerial. As you know, we are adding a second light rail station to complement the light, the North Gate Light Rail Station, and it will be an infill station at 130th. The City of Seattle's Transitway Agreement with Sound Transit provides basic terms for Sound Transit's maintenance, operation, and ownership of the Link Light Rails Transit System in the city's right of way. This agreement includes maps of the approved alignment and authorizes Sound Transit activity in the specified city right of way. In this legislation, it authorizes construction worker parking on a segment of Fifth Avenue Northeast that has been closed off to traffic since the Linwood Link Guideway construction started and will remain closed under construction until it is completed in 2025. Today's act will not significantly impact any of the underlying terms of the said transitway agreement, other than adding the infill station at 130th. As you know, this has been going on since as long as I've been on council. This legislation is being brought to full council during budget deliberations because in interest of expediting the construction of the 130th Street Station. Sound Transit is preparing to commence further construction this month. And somebody wrote in my notes, yay, so I will say yay. Allowing construction worker parking within the closed off, closed off right of way will also help facilitate the accelerated schedule. As you all know, I'm a member of the Sound Transit Board, 19-member board that includes King County, Stehomish County, and Pierce County. And again, we've been working on this infill station, infill station ND5 since 2015, actually. With that being said, are there any comments from my colleagues before we go to a vote? Okay, not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Muscata?
Hi.
Councilmember Nelson?
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawat? Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Council President Juarez?
I.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes, and the Chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. I'm moving on the agenda to items removed from the consent calendar. We have none. Moving on to item two, adoption of other resolutions. Madam Clerk, will you please read item two into the record?
Council President, before I read the item, just to note that Mr. Williams is back so we can move to suspend the council rules before this item is addressed or after it's adopted. Agenda item two, Resolution 32073, providing an honorary designation of South Oregon Street between Martin Luther King Junior Way and 31st Avenue South as Bill Burton Way.
Do you mean Mr. Miles, not Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
You meant Mr. Miles, right? Nate Miles?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Good Williams, so that's why I got a little confused. Okay, so you read it into the record. Let's do this. First, let's get it teed up. I move to adopt 32073. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So I'm going to, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. And I'm gonna let Councilmember Peterson, I'm gonna hand it over to him as a sponsor. And at that point, Madam Clerk, do I suspend the rules to allow Mr. Miles to speak?
You may, or it can also occur after the council adopts the resolution.
Miss, Councilperson Peterson, what would you prefer?
It would be great to hear from Mr. Miles now.
Okay, let's do that. Madam Clerk, I move to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Miles to speak to this resolution. Sir's second?
Second.
Good. The rules have been, okay, so there's a second. So I gotta do a vote, or we just move forward?
No, if there's no objection from anyone, go ahead and move forward. And Mr. Miles may need to press star six for us to hear him, but it looks like he's staged up and ready to go.
Okay, I do not see any objections, so go ahead, Councilperson Peterson. Were you gonna say something? Can you?
No, I was just gonna ask, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can. Yes. Hallelujah, Mr. Miles.
Success.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ian, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council, honorable members. I certainly appreciate all that you're doing, Councilman Peterson, and to Councilwoman Morales, whose district this is in. This has just been a labor of love of getting this done. What you are doing today is, and I will try to be very brief, but also to keep this from being emotional, because Bill Burton is just an amazing human being. For those of you who have met Bill, he has become a father to the fatherless and a mother to the motherless down there at that Reyna Vista Boys and Girls Club. It's more than just a club. Bill Burton has made that place a safe haven. You see it today when you drive by there, and that's because they've had all of this money that was put in there when the transit came through, and they had that transit money, they were able to fix it up. But Bill started this thing when it was nothing more than a federal housing project. It may have been a federal housing project, but Bill Burton would not let those kids feel like they were project kids. Bill Burton taught all of those kids they could be whatever they wanted to be. Bill Burton stayed there at night, sometimes to 11, 12 o'clock in the morning. Guys like Nate Robinson and Brandon Roy that you see in the NBA today are there because of Bill Burton. When they didn't have a place to go home but wanted to practice their game a little bit longer, Bill kept the gym open. I can tell you from personal experience, because when I was a single dad and I had no place to take my daughter, Bill and his teammate, and I call her a teammate because Ruthie Burton, his wife, of so many years, was right there with Bill, cooking gumbo and making sure the kids who didn't have anything to eat, and somehow they knew who didn't have anything to eat, made sure that they had something to eat. When I came to pick up my child, I knew that she had been fed. I knew more importantly that she had been loved because Bill and Ruthie Burton were there to make sure that all of those kids, and it wasn't just because it was me and some famous guy or some prominent guy. prominent guy in the community. They did that for everybody's kid. And they would send them home, which is why those kids were there when that computer center was put in before the center even opened. They would stay there late after the center was closed. And so what you're doing today is something so that years from now, coming with uh, Councilwoman Morales, when someone drives down the street and says, who is Bill Burton? Kids will say, that's Uncle Bill. That's Bill Burton, the guy that made sure we had this building. That's that's Bill Burton, the guy that got, that did the coat drive to make sure we weren't cold in the wintertime. That's Bill Burton, the guy that made sure we learned about computers by the time we were in third grade, so we had a chance to get a job that went and talked to Microsoft before anybody knew where Microsoft was. That was Bill Burton who did that, who went to Dairy Gold and made sure we had milk and cheese that wasn't government cheese. We had real fresh cheese. Bill Burton did that. And so I just want you to know, if you don't know who the guy is, Co- Councilman Peterson, that was Bill Burton. That's the name that you will see going up. And that's why people have just come out overwhelmingly and support Bill Burton. This is, this is a guy who he and his wife have just, just lived a life. And so for him to get as sick as he is right now, that's why we're trying to get this thing done right now. He is, he is, you know, he is just somebody that we will remember for a long time. He may never have his name on big buildings and that sort of stuff, but I tell you what, in that little piece of real estate, when people drive down that part of the deal, we were not gonna let Bill Burton close his eyes without seeing a sign that let us know that this is the way Bill went. This is a a dr- avenue that Bill Burton drove down every day to get to this little club called Rainier Vista Federal Housing Project to take care of somebody's kid. So on behalf of myself and the tens of thousands of people whose lives Bill has touched, he and Ruthie, I want to say thank you all, all nine of you on that committee who are doing what you are doing today. Because whether you know him or not, you are doing, you are being, becoming part of history. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I know they do too. So whatever you need to do to move it, I third the motion, whatever you need, I, I appreciate you. You guys are just amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. I'm so glad we got you back. So thank you very much for that. And I'm gonna hand it over to Councilmember Peterson and then we'll open the floor for other council members. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Council President, and and thank you Nate Miles and Larry Williams and others who are tuning in today. Co- colleagues, this resolution for an honorary street name comes at the request of Mayor Harrell. On behalf of the Rainier Vista Boys and Girls Club and the larger Rainier Valley community, I appreciate Councilmember Morales's support for this and engagement. Um, as the title of the SDOT-related resolution states, this provides an honorary designation of South Oregon Street between Martin Luther King Way and Thirty-first Ave. South as Bill Burton Way. This honorary resolution three-two-zero-seven-three was circulated yesterday by SDOT Director's Office and was on today's introduction referral calendar. Appreciate the flexibility from the Council President to get this through. As, as Nate Miles mentioned, this is, this is time-sensitive. Uh, Bill Burton has been working as a leader for the Boys and Girls Club and a passionate advocate for teens and children across the region. Um, as was discussed a bit early in his career at the Boys and Girls Club, Bill was assigned to run the Rainier Vista Boys and Girls Club. And he immediately saw the need for a new facility to replace the existing brick building with bars on the windows and a leaky roof that was nevertheless bursting at the seams with local kids wait, waiting and wanting to be part of the club's programs, which often included active mentoring from Bill himself. With Seattle Housing Authority's redevelopment of Rainier Vista under the Federal HOCS six program, Bill saw an opportunity to greatly expand the club's footprint. An opportunity Bill leveraged by raising more than eighteen million dollars in cash and in-kind contributions along with the land from SHA to build the new clubhouse, which opened in twenty-ten. The new clubhouse expanded the Boys and Girls Club's capacity by more than three times compared with the building it replaced. Bill also ensured that the club would have three times the operating budget. Ensuring that regardless of ability to pay, more than a hundred local kids could be a part of the Boys and Girls Club programming. Everything from evening basketball to after-school care, learning opportunities, summer camps, music production, uh, tutoring, mentoring, and um, i- it's been visited by uh, celebrities and astronauts have visited, um, uh, political leaders, uh, and and others have dropped in to uh, help mentor and inspire the young members. The cost of the honorary street sign and its installation will be covered by the mayor's office. Uh, colleagues, I'm honored to be able to join the mayor in SDOT in asking for your support today for this honorary street name resolution in honor of Bill Burton. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Council, are there any other customers, Morales? Good. There you go.
Thank you. Uh, well, I first want to thank you, uh, Councilmember Peterson for bringing this. Um, and do want to thank Mr. Williams and Mr. Miles for sharing so many important stories about who Bill was and what he contributed to the community. Um, as they both said, you know, he really um, made sure that generations of kids in the Rainier Vista neighborhood had a safe place to play. Um, and that provided, you know, comfort and security for them and for their families as families worked and did, uh, you know, kept their, their families um, uh, safe in the neighborhood. So um, I really want to thank all of you for uh, for sharing stories today and for doing this. I can't think of a better way to honor the work uh, that builded uh, the legacy that he will leave in the neighborhood. Uh, then to provide this street naming, which will also allow us to keep telling his story and keep reminding people about um, all that he's contributed to our neighborhood. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilor Morales. Are there any other comments from our colleagues? Um, before we go forward, I also want to thank, uh, first of all, Councilperson Peterson and Councilor Morales. But also the folks that called in, um, mainly, of course, uh, Mr. Williams and Mr. Miles. I wish we had a little bit more time, but um, I should also add that um, and acknowledge that we received a really nice email from Bill aboard at SDOT. Uh, the whole council received it yesterday. Sharing Mr. Burton's history and why he's being honored here today. And um, I want to thank SDOT for providing that to all of us, so we all have an idea. Um, I had known who Mr. Burton was, but I didn't know as much as I just learned today. So thank you very much, Councilmember Peterson, uh, Councilor Morales, and um, also uh, Bill aboard at SDOT that shared all that information with us. Okay, not seeing any other hands. Um, let's go ahead and um, does the sponsor have any closing remarks before we go to a vote? Okay. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Musceta? Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawan? Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales?
Musceta's aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Musceta. That's eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted and the chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the resolution on my behalf? Alright, moving on in our agenda to other business. Um, is there any other business before the council? This is usually the time when people ask to be excused, and I guess we're okay on that end. Alright, so before we adjourn, uh, let's see. Um, this does conclude our items of business. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting should be Tuesday, November twenty-second, but there is a very good chance that it may be canceled. If it is canceled, then our next meeting will be Tuesday, November twenty-ninth at two o'clock. And again, um, I want to thank all of you for your patience with our city council meetings, the extension, and a big thank you to the Budget Chair, Councilmember Musceta, um, for working with our office and regarding the scheduling and of course, the clerks um, who have been working with us to make sure we can uh, move not only city council meetings along, but um, try to complement and support the budget share and the work and what central staff has to do or what they have in front of them. Alright, with that, folks, I hope you have a good afternoon. We are adjourned. Thank you.